In addition to the minutes, not hearing any, do I have a motion to approve?
Certainly.
First by Mr. Newt. Second by Mayor Pertim. All those in paper side?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes of February 12th passed unanimously. We don't have any old business, we'll move directly to our new business. Our new, first item of our new business is request consideration of demolition contract with Phillips Recovery to demolish eight substandard dwellings. Ms. McCollum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to give you a bit of a background that really pertains to both items in new business, the demolition contract and then the various recreation projects. Both of these items have to do with the expenditure of dollars from our CDVG, our HUD funds that we receive. And just by way of background for you all and for our listening public, when we talk about HUD/CDVG dollars, we're talking about dollars that go, that come to us from the federal and state government that go into different pots. And we leverage those dollars by doing loans for housing rehabilitation and by doing economic development loans. When those loan payments come back to us, that's what we call our revolving loan fund. That generates that program income for us. And as you know, anytime you've got loans, outstanding loans out there and people are making payments on those, then that balance that you have in that pot of money fluctuates up and down. Well, HUD has specific rules about how much money you spend and how fast that you spend it. And last spring, HUD began to change the, or they had a change in the way that they calculate how fast you spend the money and how much money is in that balance. So you will remember that last spring, we began to have conversations about how do we do things differently that allow us to move our projects forward, that allow us to have concentrated efforts from all of our divisions, not just these CDVG dollars, but can we leverage our money to get a bigger bang for our buck and more impact in our neighborhoods? So we began in April really kind of talking about what projects are going on in our redevelopment areas and beyond. And that led us to the, our conversations about the redevelopment areas and what we term fans or focus area neighborhoods. So that was really kind of just an extension of our redevelopment areas where we can make an impact. Now, just as a reminder, our HUD/CDVG dollars and projects really have to meet two basic criterias. There are a little bit more of a, two basic national objectives, which is the benefit to low and moderate income people, and that means in that area, 70% of the people would be classified as low to moderate income. And we also have the category or the objective of elimination of slum and blight, which is why obviously demolition is a big deal to us too. So your eligible activities are rehab, demolition, public facilities, and you all will remember that public facilities can be anything from a park to a drainage project, I mean it's, that's, that's to street work, economic development, and fair housing. Those are eligible categories of where we spend, can spend dollars. So the process continued along in May, and then in June, we got HUD to bless our strategy to move forward. And we looked at everything from street paving to water and sewer line improvements, to if we knew that there were housing rehabs or demolitions going on, trying once again to make our concentrated effort give a bigger impact in our neighborhoods. We also in September developed an updated demolition list so that if we had new property owners or a change in properties on that sort of master wish list that we have of properties, we'd have current good information. And then in October, the Neighborhoods and Housing Committee met and really explored and discussed and reviewed those fans and redevelopment areas. The areas that you'll hear about tonight. So at that point, we were expecting that we were going to have to spend about $300,000 and our areas, activity areas were going to be demolition, housing rehab, economic development, and public facilities. We're still going down that path. We did our public notice to amend our, we have to have an annual plan, and then we also have to have a comprehensive plan that looks at five years worth of activities. We had that notice in November. Again, you all know HUD has a lot of requirements and a lot of hoops you have to jump through as we go through these various activities. So in December, and I know it sounds like this is, this is a long time frame to get us to this point, but this is kind of the process that we have to go through. In December, we actually sent letters out to the property owners that have, that we identified had substandard housing that could qualify under this demolition program, and we asked them. And by the city, then they could sign the consent form, send it back to us, and that could get the ball rolling. You know, not everybody takes you up on that, and not everybody qualifies for our demolishing a substandard house. But we were successful in at least getting a start, and that's the eight houses that you'll hear about tonight. So if we move forward with the demolition and these various recreation projects tonight, what it does, it certainly does the elimination of slum and blight with the eight houses, and we'll continue that process of identifying other houses that are substandard that we could potentially demolish as we move forward. But it also advances projects that are already on your master plan in some form or fashion or already on your drawing board for consideration. I think, I think that kind of gets you the, the background that tells you we've got dollars available, we have dollars available to spend on these activities, and we feel like it's a jumpstart to help us in our neighborhoods and for them to see some progress. We're not asking to construct these recreation projects tonight, just to get them essentially to construction drawings and get them shovel ready. So we'll describe those more fully as we go through it, but I wanted to give you that bit of background so that you knew where the dollars were coming from and how we arrived at getting there and why it really took us so long to get there. So, back to item number one about the demolition contract. Your request is to demolish eight houses, and that covers the properties identified as 312 West River Street, 1403 Newell Street, 214 B Street, 205 C Street, 309 E Street, 304 Benjamin Street, 418 Johnson Street, and 805 Beechwood Avenue. We did receive two bids. One was from Asbestos and Demolition Incorporated out of Lugoff for $62,300, and the low bid from Phillips Recoveries out of Pelzer at $56,800. And these units are within your redevelopment and your focus area neighborhoods. And we would use these dollars that we just talked about, our community development block grant dollars, and these reallocated dollars, we will use those to, for this particular contract. Therefore, the staff recommends approval of the contract for the low bid with Phillips Recoveries for $56,800. And by way of just kind of adding to the clearance, demolition and clearance, elimination of slum and blight, you will remember that since 2006, we have demolished 499 houses in our neighborhoods. So I think this is indicative of how you're continuing to make a positive impact with a demolition activity in these neighborhoods.
Thank you. Good background. Any questions? Just chat.
How many houses did we demo in 2017?
Well, that depends on if you want a grand total or if you want us to count NSP and NIP and...
Just total of how many houses we tore down.
NIP, we did 20 houses previously with the neighborhood stabilization. NSP, 64 houses were demolished.
But all of them, all of them weren't demolished in 2017. We didn't do 84 houses in 2017.
Well, six, really, 16 and 17.
16 are the most recent in 2017.
So we've only done 16 in 2017?
We had, yeah, different pots of money, remember.
Okay. How many houses are there less that we have in 2017? How many houses were present, but in 2017 we had, how many of the houses less?
I would say we had 20 houses.
Okay. I don't know how to word it any better. How many houses did we, did we remove in 2017?
We removed 20.
20. So we have a 20, a total 20 less. I was just curious of how many, of the 400 that we've taken down, how many we took down last year?
20 last year, 64 the year before.
Okay. All right. And then, don't we have a, in our general fund, like, didn't we, didn't the council set aside like $100,000?
We didn't set it aside. You actually said that we would, if we had monies, revenues over expenditures at the end of the year, you would look at those dollars. So it's not a budgeted item. The good thing is you've got these dollars available, so you can continue using these dollars and you don't have to tap your general fund to do it.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
But yes.
Don Thompson?
You know, these houses have been sitting, needed to be dilapidated for many years. And I'm very appreciative, many of these in my area and some in other areas too. But this is a great start, well not start, a continuation of what we've been doing for years, to be able to get these houses down and try to keep, to continue to improve our neighborhoods. I know that there are still several houses that need to go, but these eight to go now, I feel very proud that they were chosen, and this is going to help to keep our neighborhoods improved, and that's what we need to do. So I would like to recommend that we accept this proposal to demolish these eight houses.
With Phillips Recoveries?
With Phillips Recovery.
Second. Well, first and a second. Ms. Stewart?
I'd just like to make a comment. Spoke with Assistant City Manager, Mr. McCuehan and Maurice late Friday evening, and I was told I was going to get some answers back before the council meeting. I haven't gotten those answers yet today. I know that last year, we sat down in Mr. McKenzie's office and looked at a bunch of houses that needed to be torn down, and while you're talking about the fan areas, there's still old fans out there, you know, we're, we seem to be moving on to new fan areas and forgetting about, you know, the plan we previously had in place. And there was a lot of houses last year where we were told that if, you know, money's become available, they will be getting on the list to be torn down, and there are several of them that, you know, owners were willing to sign consent forms to get houses torn down to continue the good things that went along with the 20 houses that were torn down last year. You know, you may have had three or four on East Whitney Street that got torn down, but there was a couple more, we just didn't have the money. When money had come available, you would go back and get those, so that way you've got a bigger redevelopment area.
Right.
Well, those houses seem to be remiss on this list here, and just curious, why, you know, what happened to that list, and why didn't we just jump over to a new list and abandon the old plan?
Well, we didn't abandon the old plan. I would tell you that, as you know, a lot of times, we have properties that change hands, or more often is the case, we have properties that remain in somebody's ownership, but that owner dies, it goes then into an estate, and then those people may not live here anymore. We have trouble getting to those people, and the difficulty in getting consent forms from people who are not here anymore can be difficult. I would say this, this is our first step at bringing you eight, that people willingly gave us consent forms and we knew we could move these forward without, without difficulty. What, what we would tell you today is that we're not stopping here. We know from that kind of old master list that there, if it was dilapidated two years ago, it's still dilapidated today for sure.
I understand, I understand, but again, my question is, is that same individuals who were willing to sign consent forms last year, but the money ran out last year?
Right.
They were still willing to sign this year, since they were out, why did those willing people not get contacted again about saying, hey, do you want to, are you still willing to tear your houses down?
I can't answer that question, but we certainly will go out, if you share those names with us, we'll go out there and talk to them again and see if they remain interested. Because again, like we said, this is just the start. We would fully expect to bring more houses back to you for demolition, and anybody that is a willing participant. The only thing we don't want to do is, we don't want consent forms from people if we're not truly ready to tear down the houses, because I think that leads to false expectations. So if we really don't have dollars that you're ready to allocate right then, then I think it leads people to expect something we might not be able to deliver. So if you'll share with us...
And just one other point, you know, I made the comment to Mr. McCuehan and Mr. McKenzie that, you know, we have a lot of good neighborhood groups in all of our areas. B has one, I have one. I know some of the frustration, I think, that came out of, from the staff was, is that, well, they don't, can't get in touch with a certain individual to see if they're willing. Well, I think that's, that goes, well, what these neighborhood groups are all about. We're willing, the neighborhood is willing to help identify people if the city staff can't identify them. Nobody knows the neighborhood better than the people who live there. So somebody who may have changed ownership to another brother or cousin or sister, they may know who that is and how to get in contact with them. So again, I would just challenge the city staff to make use of our neighborhood groups and to ask during these meetings, say, hey, we're looking to tear down these houses, we can't get in contact with these individuals. Do you guys know how we might can get in contact with them? Because I think it's a partnership that we need to work on.
Absolutely, we agree with you.
Any other comments?
Just real quick, Mr. Mayor.
It's, there's eight houses for 56, eight, that's like, I think, $7,100 a house. Has that price come down over, I mean, it seems like it used to be a little bit more expensive than that, so I guess the bid process...
I wouldn't say that it's necessarily come down. When we're just doing an estimate based on past history, we, for just general estimate, we say about $5,000 apiece, but it depends on whether or not the, it depends on the size, square footage of the house, depends on if it's one-story, two-story, depends on if we have asbestos and lead-based paint that has to be evaded. So there are different factors that go in it. But we certainly feel like since these are in the ballpark, that it's a reasonable price.
And these particular, we won't own them, we're just tearing down...
We're just tearing down.
Tearing down.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Mayor.
Um, one of the things that may have brought the price in, haven't we used Phillips Recovery before?
We have.
That's what I thought.
That's not, not the only vendor we've used, but we certainly have, yes.
Doing some of the other units?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I might get why the prices sound a bit different.
Another, another factor, I might interject, is that it depends on the foundation type, because if it's a peer-to-peer, that's a lot different than if it's a curtain wall, which is a lot more weight for them to dispose of and to haul, so.
Any other comments, questions? Out of first and a second? All those in paper side?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. One last comment, I would say that when it comes to our substandard dwellings in our city, the demand is high, as in other cities our size throughout the state. Communications obviously is a must between us and the, and the community, and we still continue to, the number of homes that we've torn down, we've done a good job of putting houses back up, but the challenge is, just like a lot of communities, is finding good affordable housing for, for, for the people who need it. But I'm sure we're up to the task and will continue to move that way. Our last item of our new business is request consideration of funding for various recreation projects. Ms. McCollum?
You have, you will hear tonight that we have revised these numbers, and I will explain the numbers as we go through them. It's, will be a lesser amount than, than what is shown up on our screen. But again, this goes back to the CDVG dollars that we're talking about spending to advance these various recreation projects to, through construction drawings, but stop there. We would not construct B Thompson Park. What we would propose, and we got a proposal from the land plan group, and the work, this particular project is in your 2017 Recreation Master Plan. The scope of work includes civil engineering, the landscape design, boundary and topo survey, geotechnical specifications, and it gets you through to design development drawings. It does not include the pre-bid and so forth on that. The total price tag for that fee is $73,030. On St. Francis Park, you will remember that back in November, you approved the purchase of playground equipment for that park, as well as fencing and an ADA access drive and parking area. That, the dollars that you approved in November amounted to $46,534.45, excuse me, 62 cents. At that point, we were thinking we've allocated those dollars from our hospitality fund. Tonight, we were asking that, this doesn't change, you've still approved that project, we just like, we would like to, instead of spending hospitality dollars for that part of the project, that we would utilize the CDVG funding rather than the hospitality funding. And in addition to that, we'd like for the land plan group to develop a more comprehensive park development for St. Francis, so that it would truly be a development plan or a plan for us to see how that park could be better utilized going forward. What I mean by that is, recently, you closed the street to traffic access, and being able to incorporate that street into the park in some trail fashion or walking track, or maybe adding at some point a born learning trail to the park, or other components would be an important thing in moving that park forward in the future. So we think having that full development plan that tells us how to utilize that park better, is there, are there other activities that ought to be included in that park would be very helpful. In order to develop that master plan and help us complete the playground installation and the ADA access and get that piece of it that you've already approved done, then the fee that is proposed by the land plan group is $54,700.
May I ask a question there later?
Yes, sir. Either way.
Go ahead.
Just curious, out of both of these two projects, why are we taking out the pre-bid, all the other stuff? Because again, that's about, over the two projects, it's about $30,000. And the second part of that question, well, when you go back and get ready to do that at a later time, is it going to cost you more then than it would now? Don?
I'll wait on, I'll wait on your response, yes.
Well, my, my answer to that would be, we're not really ready to move forward with the full-fledged construction. We think that there, it certainly is in your master plan, it meets your guidelines of being a project that you wanted to advance. The, our goal is, we don't believe that we could get the entire project completed, we're trying to get as many projects as we can done in order to meet our requirements with HUD by May. And from a construction standpoint, we don't think it's realistic for us to be able to get a project through to construction and have it complete by May. So that would be our rationale for getting the project to the construction drawing stage so that it's ready for construction, but not, not pull the, not pull the trigger on the construction itself until a later date. And yes, I do think in talking with our consultants, there certainly is some, some economies of scale that we would benefit from by doing it as a turnkey all the way through to construction. You know, how much of that, Don may be better able to answer that question.
So, so my question was, is it, first, when I looked at the numbers of where it was versus what it is now, is, was that a negotiation that you were, you were able to negotiate that they would get all these projects, that they would reduce their fee because it would be more cumulative, that they could do multiple things, site visits, things like that? Or was it simply just to get the, reduce the cost, and that cost is going to come later?
We wanted the cost itemized, they'd already given us the number, this was not a negotiation. We just initially did not have an, we did not have the project scope itemized, we didn't ask for that.
So we didn't get any economies of scale if they're getting multiple projects from us?
Well, they're getting these two projects because they were, one of the firms in your on-call engineers, and they were the ones that were, since they did the Recreation Master Plan, that were most familiar with these projects.
Okay. So the, so the part that was renewed for the first, for the B Thompson Park... So the, so the part that was renewed for the first, for the B. Thompson Park, was sixteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. And that was their line item for those things that were removed. So that was, it's, it's not, it's just a deferred cost as opposed to?
I think that's accurate, yes.
To a reduction in fees.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Anything else?
It's just, it's just deferring costs. It's still there. It's the, the initial thing that we got, it seems like all that's still going to be there. Now, it does seem, based on the fee scope, that, that the project scope is pretty involved.
Well, we're, we're giving, I mean, if you all would, I think our rationale in changing the dollar figures for you was because our initial conversation with you was that we'd get them through to construction drawings. So we erred by giving you a bigger scope than what we really intended to do. Now, if, if you would like to do the whole ball of wax and move forward to, through to construction, we don't have any objection to that. But I think that, you know, that, that does, that does certainly increase your cost, and it does a little bit more than we anticipated to do by our, our May timeframe.
So my, my last question would be, with that, with that additional part that we, we removed, is that something that our city engineering department could manage to try to, you know, to, to have that savings passed on to us as opposed to?
Well, number one, it doesn't, that would not help us as far as spending our CDBG dollars if we, if we use our own.
So there's no other projects, like demolition projects or anything that we could use? You know, achieving that savings and then maybe using it for something else?
Well, we don't, we would prefer to contract it out because we don't believe our current staff has the time to allocate to, to these projects. Can we use that sixteen thousand on something else? Yes. But remember, remember what we said about this balance that we're working with, it's a fluctuating number because we're drawing down money for normal activities now, and we'll be drawing down money if you approve it for these activities. So I don't want to, I'd rather under-promise and over-deliver than the other way around for y'all.
Mr. Buck Rogers?
Yes, sir.
You know, this is part of our master plan and, and the money used going towards it.
Yes, sir.
And I think, I think we ought to take advantage of it and, and go ahead because without it, we just, somebody else is going to get it.
That's right. And I'm not suggesting we don't do it, I'm just, I was just.
I don't think that was any suggestion by me either, I was just curious on what, you know, didn't know if we were going to come back, you know, a year from now, ready to pre-bid and where it was sixteen thousand dollars they knocked down, now they're going to charge us twenty-six thousand dollars to produce those same documents, you know, a year from now. That was, that was only my question.
That's a good question.
You know, was, you know, and that's, I think that's what Don was getting at, was that sixteen thousand, if they have a line item that said construction documents, sixteen thousand dollars, and if that's what they took out, well then, at least we know that's their line item, instead of saying, oh, well, we'll just take sixteen thousand dollars off our bid, just get it out of the air somewhere, just didn't know where they came up with that number from.
Well, they obviously did the itemization on their own in the beginning to come up with the full price tag. So they just didn't share that number with us because we didn't ask them to do it that way. We don't have any problem going back and asking them, you know, if, if we wait six months and come back, or your number's still going to be the same, I, I would guess their answer would be that, they might say yes, they, I mean. The group is committed to projects in the city, and they're committed to your master plan, they know a lot about moving these projects forward, and I think they've been a good partner for us to work with. So we, we're agreeable with the, the whole eighty-nine thousand or the seventy-three thousand, whichever direction you would like to go.
I guess the, the thing is, I guess we're talking about timeframe. You know, if we were talking about a year from now, I don't think, I mean, they're, they're like most businesses, they're, they're going on an annual, I mean, they're, they're based revenues on a calendar year, and pricing and so forth. I, I would think that everybody would look at things a little bit differently for the year 2019. But from what you're telling me, this isn't, we're not talking about ten months, we're talking about a shorter timeframe and, and coming back and, and, and using some of the dollars to go with the projects.
Well, that depends on, on council's priorities. You know, because it's in your master plan, that's why we brought these projects forward, and they fit the redevelopment and fan areas that you all blessed as our strategy. So, you know, the, previously, when we talk about recreation projects, we're normally talking about using hospitality dollars to advance them. So you haven't put a timeframe on those projects to get them done. So I think that's why we were saying, take it, take it in increments. Let's meet our initial mission, which was to make sure we're following HUD's guidelines, to spend the money in the proper timeliness fashion, and yet meet all of our other internal goals, which is still, you know, looking at the biggest concentration and impact in a neighborhood we can, we can make.
So for these first two projects, we have obviously your recommendation, the staff's recommendation of the seventy-three thousand, thirty and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred.
Fifty-four. Yes, sir.
Now, D.B. Walker Park?
These two are a little bit different because we don't have direct proposals from the, our consultants yet. We're, what we would ask you in D.B. Walker Park, it has. To do is the one court that is by itself and is closest to the playground and does need work, we would like to replace that asphalt court with a concrete court. Only one court, because the other two courts that are.
Now, there, there, there are three courts together, and then there's the one court that's.
And that's the, and I may correct you if I'm wrong, the, the courts that, that they're replacing is not the closest to the playground, it's the furthest away from the playground, it's the one by itself down, where used to be the old pool area with a big brick wall, then you have the other two courts that are closer to the playground. Those are the ones that were not removed.
Well, I, I, I misstated it. I, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that this particular one that we want to replace will be where the focus in D.B. Walker is on youth as opposed to adult basketball, which would be why we really wanted to focus on that one. Mr. Bevel is here, he can help bail me out, Bobby. But again, just to get you, I let Bobby address that particular element of the project. But as far as the fee is concerned, what we would like to propose to you tonight, again, to keep us moving, would be that you, we would recommend a fee not to exceed forty-five thousand without coming back to you for additional approval. And we believe that allow, that would allow us, if you like this project and you think that fits with what we're trying to accomplish, we've already reached out to get a price on that work, and we think that certainly is a reasonable price tag.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. The land plan group did the master plan for the Wright Center, which had basketball courts moving up in that area. And the thought was to move the double basketball courts out of D.B. Walker, which is closest to the playground, up to that area and create more of a grassy area. Because if you're familiar with D.B. Walker, there's not a lot of grass for activities put up tents, it's either going to be on asphalt, basketball court. So this would create an area for that. The single, what we call the single basketball court actually stays even in the conceptual that the land plan group did. So that was going to stay regardless if we moved the basketball courts to Wright Center or kept it down there. It's in need of repair as the double basketball courts are with cracks and ponding. And since that court was going to stay even in the future plan, we thought this was a time to go ahead, since it's in the fan area, to be able to tear that old asphalt up, grade it, because now it's got ponding issues, water sits on it, there's cracks in it, it freezes, it gets worse. We've had it resurfaced twice since I've been with the city. But the contractors will only give a year warranty just because we need to do more. This is an opportunity to do more, tear it out, remove it, come back with five inches of con, four thousand pound concrete, sort of a broom finish, stripe it, and that would solve a lot of issues we have, and it would be something that would stay in that area.
Thank you.
And if you're familiar with D.B. Walker, you can't get a concrete truck down in there, so they're going to have to pump it from Market Street from the top to get up there because there's no really access road except our path, walking path there, which is not designed to hold that much concrete.
Miss Jen? Just, I notice, if it's, if the substrate is not stable, the concrete won't hold either. So that's, I would encourage, I think y'all heard me ask before, is maybe do a soil test to make sure that we don't have to put any sub, sub base in before the, the concrete goes in. Because, I mean, it, it won't hold. If, if the ground's sinking, it's going to sink whether it's concrete or cement.
And that's what happens every time we do it, you get cracks again because it just keeps coming up and down, up and down.
They're saying they could add stone if needed.
Yeah.
That's correct. But we can also do a soil sample before we even do that to make sure that.
Yeah. Anything else, guys?
The west.
Multiuse?
Yes, sir. As you all know, we certainly have a bike and pedestrian connectivity plan, it's in your, also in your Recreation Master Plan. What we looked at was the ability to utilize properties that the city owned or had access to. And in this particular west side area, which is your fan area as well as your redevelopment area, we identified trying to advance our multi-use path from Blackley Street to Franklin Street. And this would be the, doing the necessary legwork that would get us to the construction drawings, so all of the kind of preliminary engineering and research for that. Goodwin Mills in K-wood was another one of the firms on your On Call Engineers, and they do have some extensive background in multi-use paths. And we think they would, after talking with them and interviewing them, we think they would do a good job on advancing this particular project. Once again, they have not submitted their price for us, but we would ask you tonight to consider a fee not to exceed seventy-five thousand without coming back to you for additional approval. And that would allow that project, as well as D.B. Walker and the other two, to move forward with the use of the CDBG dollars. For those four projects, B. Thompson Park, St. Francis, the multi-use path, D.B. Walker, for those four, the total, if you go with just getting us to the construction stage, that gets us to two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty dollars. And then adding the re, kind of the reallocation from hospitality to CDBG for the playground expenditures, that gets you to two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-four. If you then add the demolition that you just approved into that, that becomes three-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand and sixty-four dollars, which gets us pretty close to our goal of about the four-hundred-thousand mark that's, that is necessary for us to spend our HUD dollars on, CDBG dollars on.
Good. And we'll open it up, have Ms. Stewart and Dr. Thompson in.
I just want to say, I think, I just like to say, I think all these projects are very worthy, and I support all the projects. I just would like to make a point of clarification. The point I was making regarding the B. Thompson Park and the St. Francis Park is I know we were always very good about putting, getting design drawings, and they go on the shelf, and then they never get seen through. You know, I was excited to see the eighty-nine and the sixty-eight to begin with because I was like, hey, we've got a, a project that's going to be designed, we're getting ready to do construction documents, now we're getting ready to build it, so we can see it happening. So that's the point I was trying to make, you know, when I made my comments. It wasn't that, I don't think the projects are good, I just was getting excited about seeing them move forward because I think between the park and the bikeways, I think all of that can be connected together, and I think that's what we're trying to do from a master recreation plan. But I would like to ask, the thirty thousand dollars in savings that we're seeing, can we identify four more houses at about seven thousand apiece to take up that savings to, to maybe get four more houses on the demolition list? We are realizing the savings from what we got previously to what we have tonight, so, but again, just put that out there, food of thought.
And, excuse me, response, kind of took the words out of my mouth.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
But just to kind of go back, you know, I'm looking at the scope of work for the projects, Thompson Park, St. Francis, of course, the other two, and wondering, when is the construction going to start? I too would not like to see these planned, we spent all the money, and as you said, put it on the shelf. I would be happy to see the work done. I don't know how long it's going to take to do this pre-construction and pre, yeah, work that you're doing, the engineering, landscaping, all of that, and bring it back and say, this is what we're going to do. But I don't know how much time we're talking about to get all of this done, if we've got the money to do it.
Well, I have a suggestion, Dr. Thompson. You know, getting, getting the construction drawings done will enable us to get a better your master plan, but we don't have, it's based upon, you know, a conceptional plan, not, not actual construction drawings. So, you know, if, if you all are anxious to move these projects forward to construction, let us do this. Let us go back to our, our various firms, professionals that are helping us with this, and certainly make sure that we clearly, that they clearly understand that we want to move them forward. We authorizing this work supposedly tonight, but that we may move those forward, for example, if, if the land plan group would hold that price for us if we move forward with it this, this calendar year. The other thing is, we want to make sure we're not overspending our dollars and we still have the flexibility. Remember, we still have CDBG entitlement dollars to spend, and we have these reallocated dollars to spend. So I think that would give us a better handle on bringing back a timeframe and what those dollars really look like. So we, we, we would be very excited if you want to move these forward, but as a, out of, out of caution for knowing what the construction dollars, a better look at what those construction dollars would be, I think we would feel better as your staff to bring that back to you after talking to the consultants a little further.
I mean, I'm thinking, St. Francis Park, for instance, they have, I mean, suffered, they've kind of suffered for many years without having a park at all. And so they've got very excited about what we plan to do at St. Francis Park. We've been had Mr. Patel to give money out of his pocket to help us with the project. So we don't want to keep just doing the pre-constructions and they're saying, when are you going to get the park done? So I would like to see us as quickly as possible, not to waste money, but to get to construction, you know, drawing the plans up, the engineering, all that has to be done. But I hope we can do it as quickly as possible and move ahead with the actual construction so people can see this is what we're doing.
Well, on St. Francis, you do get more than that because you've already approved that previously. So on St. Francis, the only thing you're getting really in addition is a more comprehensive plan for the park as a whole, that you're already getting, going to construct it, you're going to get the playground equipment installed, new equipment, and get it installed, you'll get an.
That would happen regardless?
That's going to happen, that's going to happen.
What's the timeframe on that?
Well, it's under construction now.
Is, okay, good.
Weather has delayed that a little bit.
Because I keep getting the calls, when are y'all going to do the park?
Well, it, it's, it's underway, so. Well, it, it's, it's underway, so...
Ms. Chen?
Ms., Ms., Mr. Roberts, John Roberts.
Yeah, so, thank you. Lundy, you answered one question. You said they want to be partners of ours, so that was gonna be my suggestion. They want to be partners, so they'll table their pricing for the next year when we come back and reallocate these funds. Number two, in our November meeting, we discussed St. Francis Park, the adjoining property. Trying to contact the Mills.
Yeah.
So before we get forward with full construction plans, what we want to see...
Well, no, you're, you're already constructing the park, but the other part that you're asking for tonight is for the land plan group to develop you a comprehensive master plan for that whole park. They could look at the adjacent property, tell whether or not there's, there's a way to fit that property into this park in a way that makes sense and tell us how to use it in the future, determine if that's...
Kind of an A-B conception, of course.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Holger, then Mr. Chapman.
So, Mr. McConnell, we have, I'm just gonna try to comprehend all this. We have four projects.
Yes, sir.
The DB Walker is a project that's gonna hap, that what we want to load on tonight is something that's actually gonna happen later, sooner rather than later.
Yes, sir. Before May.
And St. Francis, we know we're gonna get playground equipment in there.
Yes, sir.
And so is it fair to say the other three or two and a half projects, we're gonna take to a point to become, well, a new term, but I'm sure Don's heard, or shovel-ready?
Yes, sir.
That all we have to do is say, go do that.
Correct. But you would, you would have a better, you would have a better barometer.
You'd have a cause to put us in a cause.
Yes.
So with that, I'd like to make a motion, we approve this.
First by Mr. Holger.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Mr. Chapman?
So to piggyback a little bit on Mayor Lieutenant Roberts, that, yes, we are partners, but the key is, is we're the driver of the project. So, so because they've already proposed and outlined the, the cost, you know, we can determine when that's gonna occur.
Yes.
And, and I think it's reasonable for them to understand that if we want to proceed with this relationship and these multiple projects that are coming forward, that, you know, we would encourage them to stick to what the, what they've already outlined. I think that's a reasonable...
I do too. Now, from the staff standpoint, can we ask for a clarification? Mr. Stewart mentioned adding about four more houses in there.
I think he was, well, I don't want to speak for you. Go ahead.
No, I'm just saying, you know, I'm just saying, still, just letting the money sit there, HUD, do something with, let's put it into another project, whether it's houses or whether it's moving one of these recreation projects along, I'd still just let it sit there, let's spend that too. We won't lose it.
Do we have, Megan, can Erica, can you speak on...
We have six more.
Would you come up here for a second and just talk about future housing demolitions?
The building inspections have already been occurring for additional houses and we presently have six more cassette forms that we've obtained. I'm in the process of working with the staff to try to bid out, getting those units tested for lift and asbestos, followed by if it needed abatement. And they will come back before you again to ask for the approval of demolition of those units. And the inspectors are continuously working to identify additional units in particularly east side of town. So I do see us in the future coming back with additional units.
Ms. McConnell?
And Mr. Mayor, one, one more project that we talked about internally that I would like to, to bring to your attention. We've talked with Mr. Stewart about the potential to add this same kind of basketball court, the concrete basketball court at Greeley Park. And that is, is a project that we could also undertake at this time if you would, we did not include it in this write-up, but it certainly would be a project that fits in your redevelopment areas. It is an existing basketball court that could certainly benefit from refreshing and we could certainly...
And we could somewhat use the same pricing that we already have.
Yes, sir.
The same contractor just bid it out for both of the single basketball courts?
So that number, was it 300, how much?
It would go up. Not to exceed 45,000. So that would, that would, number would go up.
So we're, we're, it's not going out for bid, it's going out for pricing.
Oh, it's gonna be...
Because, because if there's only one person pricing it, it's, that person's just pricing it. Where if you're bidding it, it's going out to multiple people.
It's gonna go out to multiple people.
Oh, it is? I thought you said it was only that one, one...
No, no, no.
No, what I'm saying is...
We had to have, we had to have something to be able to tell y'all a barometer.
Okay, perfect.
Clarification though, still though, is that what I'm saying is, when it goes up for pricing, when it goes up for bids, and we should let the contractor, that same contractor could do both of the projects at DB Walker and Greeley Park if the council's so interested in that.
I misunderstood. I thought you, it was only one bidder, one person pricing.
But I guess what you're telling, that's how you base your presentation to us?
That's correct.
By getting a price and going out and bid. So...
Well, I guess I'd just like to make one other comment.
Go ahead.
We always talk about the government placing funds on us to pay what it seems like now we're getting to spend some of their money and to get some projects moving forward.
Good.
So if, if Mr. Harbin...
So we need to amend?
Yeah, my mo, so I'm amending my motion to also do the, to include Greeley...
Basketball.
Basketball court into the project, not to exceed, both projects not to exceed 45,000. We only take that out.
All right, take it up. We anticipate about 25,000 to be safe. I would say 30,000, so...
Not to include 70,000.
Yeah, if you want to say 75,000, not to exceed 75,000 for both basketball courts.
Yes.
Well, first, the amendment.
Yes.
Got that more getting handed?
Yes.
And Don was second on the amendment. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Their request passes. The funding request for recreation projects passes in Anderson. We'll move on to administrative briefing. Ms. McConnell?
Darwin Wright Park lease. As you all know, Darwin Wright Park is under lease with the Corps of Engineers to the City of Anderson. And we've been leasing that part since 1969. Our lease was for 25 years and that is coming up for renewal or expiration in April of 2019. The Corps of Engineers says, well in advance of that expiration, they ask, are you interested in renewing your lease? And if you are, then you need to submit a letter of intent to them telling that you're interested in doing so. Now, we don't yet know whether this would be another 25-year lease or what the terms of that lease might be. But from the staff standpoint, and we have, we have asked the Recreation Committee members for their input on this, but we would certainly recommend that we submit our letter of intent saying we'd like to continue to lease this part. It is used very heavily over the years. We've continued to invest in it over the years and... ...a park that is on Beautiful Lake Hartwell and we think it's an asset to our inventory. So if you have no objections, we would like to submit our letter of intent to renew the lease for Darwin Wright Park.
And as you mentioned, it'll come back to council.
Yes, sir. The lease itself would come back to you all for action at a later date.
Thank you.
Upcoming events, it's almost the, certainly the end of February, that gets us into March. And on March the 8th, we have the Anderson County Municipal Association meeting. That's at 7:00 PM and it will be in Honeye Path. And then if you look at the week of the 12th, we start with sounds in the parks. And that Thursday, the Southeast Anderson Task Force meets at 5:30 and that at least gets us to our next council meeting.
Thank you.
That's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. I haven't any more additions, so I'm going to turn the motion to adjourn. First by Mr. Newton, second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Stand adjourned.